May 22nd, County Commission meeting to order. And we will stand for a moment of silent reflection and then the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Davis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. And the agenda includes the 2013 provisional budget presentation by Attorney Julie Pearson and discussion by the Board relative to the same. And then we have a proposed hearing schedule that we'll try to stay as close as we can to, but at the same time, we need to have all the discussion that is necessary. So at this point in time, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda or revise it.
So moved.
Which, which do you move?
Moved to.
Approve or revise?
Approve the agenda, sorry. That's where I'm going.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Commissioner, County Auditor, Julie Pearson.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
It's out of order, I won't accept it.
Darn.
The presented to you is the 2013 provisional budget being presented by department heads and elected officials. The total of the budget is eighty-two million, three oh one, six seventy-three. The budget was prepared, including the authorized COLA of two percent and the merit of one point five, along with sufficient but conservative operation increases. The department heads and elected officials met at a group meeting last Friday, and it was decided to submit the budget to the Board with the recommendation that the Boards use both the new construction and the three percent CPI in taxes for general fund. The department head and elected officials feel this provisional budget meets three goals. Reserves are at nineteen point seventy-nine estimated, right on the target with the goal of twenty percent, as motion by the Board, allows us to provide the services that the citizens of Pennington County need and expect, and at the same level as of today, and finally gives the employees the recognition they deserve for their work. In closing, we know what it takes to conservatively run our departments, and this budget as submitted is the minimum we need to present that effort, yet still acknowledge our dedicated employees. With budget hearings still pending, the Board and discussion with department heads may find services they no longer feel they can afford to offer up to the taxpayers. The budget as it submits, again, is eighty-two million, three oh one, six seventy-three. We have miscellaneous revenues of almost forty million. We use ten million in cash reserves and tax revenues of thirty-five million, one oh four, five seventy-six. The budget's supported forty-eight percent by miscellaneous revenues, twelve percent by cash reserves, and forty-two point six-five percent by tax revenues. The second page of the means of finance, the estimated levies are at the estimated values used from the latest abstract, and levies are estimated at point five six one for accumulated building, four point four one one for county general, and point oh seven six for county fair. County fire at one point, at point one three, library plus the opt-out at two point one nine, and unorganized road at one point one five four. It results in a four point sixteen percent increase to county consolidated, a zero percent increase to county fire, one percent increase in library, and one point four percent increase in unorganized road. The taxes on a hundred thousand dollar house would be ninety cents additional for accumulated building, nineteen twenty-five for county general, thirty-one cents for county fair, zero for county fire, twenty-three cents for library, and a dollar sixty for unorganized road. If anybody has any questions, there are department heads here that would like to comment if you have questions.
Yes. Julie, on the, if I can find the right page.
Okay.
The estimated cash balance at the end of the year 2012.
County general?
Yeah.
Or for all the funds?
Just a suggestion as we go along, anyone presenting information or asking questions in reference, give the page number, if you would, please, to the category.
Okay, if you look on page twenty of your, of this first section that you put together, you're showing the estimated cash balance at December 31st, eleven million, seven forty-three, one seventeen?
Yes, at the end of 2012.
At the end of 2012. And then on the beginning of 2013, the next page, page 21, you're showing estimated cash balance of twelve million, six twenty, three twenty-three, and that represents about eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah, the difference is the way the special reserves were updated, and so that you gave at the beginning of 2012 that weren't included in the special reserve notes for the 2012.
So you added?
You added, the catastrophic hospital, equipment reserve has changed, and you added the two twenty for the software, and the ITS equipment changed.
Okay.
The ones on one, one twelve were how they were estimated at one, how they were actually at the close of year, and the 2013 were how you've estimated them.
It still doesn't come up with the difference, so is that, would that be the only difference?
I have to go back and look at the calculations, Don.
Okay.
Crisis care went from two fifty to seven fifty, two hundred and twenty.
The difference between, the difference between those two special reserves is six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, one forty-eight, or one forty. So we've still got a couple of hundred, a little over two hundred thousand, it looks like, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, the beginning one, one, 2013 would be with payables, no? I'd have to go back and check my individual cells to see.
See where it comes from.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, maybe sometime today, as we're going through this, you could look at that and just let me know, appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? I have kind of a general question, Julie, the reserve category, is that calculated on the total budget or just the tax, real estate taxes, revenue?
Say that again, Lindell.
Is the three percent, or the twenty percent reserve, is that calculated to, on the basis of just the real estate tax revenue or the entire budget?
It's included on the entire budget.
And so the miscellaneous revenues that are listed in the budgeting column here, they do not come in at the same cash flow as, as the real estate taxes?
The miscellaneous revenues all come at a different rate. Some of them are monthly by one or two months late, some of them are quarterly by one or two months late at the end of the quarter, and some of them are semi-annually and a few are just annually.
And so some of those are grants, things of that kind?
Some are, some are grants, like the PILT money doesn't come in on a monthly basis. That's what we use the, the twenty percent for, is to carry us through till we get the first half of taxes and the first quarterly payments in, in April and May, and November and December. Because we only collect about one, one or two percent of our property taxes each month in those off-tax months, and the miscellaneous revenues come in on an erratic basis based upon what they are. And some of the larger revenues, like your bank franchise, your PILT money, comes in annually in the latter part of the year. Some of the grants that are reimbursable grants, they come in one or two months after the close, some of them are monthly, most of them are quarterly. So we're into March and September are our lowest cash places, and that's what we use the twenty percent reserves for. And the reports that we send to the Board estimate March at the end of, like, at five percent, one's at five and one's at nine.
I don't know, do the other commissioners have this report?
No, they don't.
Might just pass it down.
Those come to the Board, those are required by the Department Legislative Audit and the Legislature, and those are estimates that we do and publish in the paper, come to the Board on a semi-annual basis.
Number ten, eight hundred account or auditing designation says taxes receivable, and I'm not sure whether all those other columns are some of the grant money you're talking about in the PILT, or how does that work?
Are you looking at March or September's, Lindell?
March.
Okay. On what page, what line are you looking at, ten, eight hundred?
Ten, eight hundred, yeah.
Yeah, that would be what is left of the current taxes at the close of March.
The real estate tax?
Yes, that's real estate. Current is real estate delinquent, and all others come under the taxes delinquent line. Taxes receivable, delinquent, accounts receivable, that is what's left of money we have yet to collect from twenty, from the year past, one point four million, and investments. That's, it's a standardized form that the state requires us to do to show you what your cash, to show you as well as the legislators, because they were concerned that counties were hoarding too much money at year-end, and then this is, this is what we use an estimate for. And you see that September is lower than March's, and that's because of all the highway construction projects that typically take, are done during the summer months. So at a twenty percent estimated at year-end, we flow through with adequate cash, reserves for cash flow into September. So that's a real telling report.
In my discussions with Holly about this issue, or this focal point, she indicated that that had some bearing on our bond rating, the cash reserve?
Yes, you never want to get down to a negative cash, cash, cash position. For one, it's illegal, especially in the general fund, and again, this is just for general fund. The other ones are a lot more simple to, we just look at them and can, can tell whether they have expected expenditures. The, some accounts that have large cash balances, such as fire, which is going to be using it for a project in 2012 and 2013, Title III money we can use as we estimate projects and that amount that we have unused, and I'm not sure what the date is, do you remember that we have to turn back? Road and Bridge is accumulating money for some of their larger projects, that's why there's such a large increase in the budget this year as compared to last year, as they're finally, finally, they're using up a lot of what they've been accumulating over the years. If you'll notice, Highway and Bridge is using a large amount of their, three point nine of their four million dollars in reserves. So the rest of them, twenty-four seven is another one that has a large amount estimated at the end of the year, and that is a self-sustaining fund, it doesn't have tax dollars in it. I don't know if Kevin Tome has an issue or a project for, for those leftover monies.
He was dozing off until you said his name.
Was he? So we kind of look at each, each one to make sure, that's what this, I updated this cash balance analysis that was in your provisional one, I actually put balances on it. I had only partially done it when Holly asked me why we only had a hundred and sixty-six thousand left in accumulated building. Accumulated building has a four point four estimated at the end of the 2012. That's because if the Board recalls, we repaid all of those land purchases and original expenditures from the Block 99 purchases once we received our bond monies. So I'm sure that will, that will, money will be used in the master plan.
Okay, I'm jumping around here a little bit.
Okay.
And I don't mean to include the other commissioners, but in your initial page, would you educate me on what's represented by the three percent CPI? What is that calculated against? And then also explain the two point one percent CPI holdover and how that, or why and how that exists?
Okay, each year, the taxes from the last year can be increased under the tax statutes by the amount of new construction and by the amount of the CPI with a maximum of three percent that's granted by the state. The state tells us what that is. Last year, the Board made the decision not to use any growth dollars, new construction, which you lose that forever, the ability to tax on that, and then they did not use the CPI, which according to statute, we can hold for three years. So that's what the two point one is. You didn't use it last year, you have up to three years to use it, that CPI to apply against taxes if the Board desires. The Board has indicated that, that early on in the discussions, they did not want to use that. I, however, give you that amount. It's figured off of the amount of taxes levied from the year before. So the new construction is one percent, the, is a percentage, which is, which is on that, which is what has been calculated to date, and then the CPI listed on there is what the state granted us this year. And I figured them separately, so the Board had those separate amounts to see which ones they wanted to apply. The Board's original motion was to just use the percent of new construction from this year.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Julie, when, when these budgets were put together and your summary sheet of what the budgets are.
Mm-hmm.
The figures that you have used to be able to come to the conclusion at the end that there'd be nineteen percent, nineteen point something reserves, was using the growth and the CPI, the three percent CPI?
Yes.
But not the two point one?
Not the two point one.
Okay. Mr. Chair, it would seem to me, probably since, since early on in our discussions on budgets, we had, this Board had passed a motion to only use the growth figures. So if this budget that is presented to us is balanced, so to speak balanced, with a nineteen point something reserves where it is, the Board has indicated they wanted it to be, using the, the growth and the three percent CPI, it would seem to me, before we go very far with this whole budget discussion, the Board needs to make a decision about the three percent CPI.
That's correct.
Because if we don't use that, then we've got to back up on the budgets.
Yes.
So the focus of our discussion right now, unless we have other details, should be in regard to that issue.
Do we use the CPI or don't we use the CPI?
Right.
I know there are many department heads that, that said at the department head meeting that we held, that would like to speak to that issue, if you'd like to hear their comments before you start your discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know there's, saying that there's no such thing is a stupid question, and I've never believed that, but, because there are. So here goes. Looks to me like, if we use growth only, there's about a million, eighty thousand dollars extra in taxes. Is that what that maximum taxes represents, right?
Yes.
It looks to me like the growth and the means of finance, tax revenues, amount of change, a million, ninety-seven thousand, basically.
The same.
Those two balance.
Yeah.
So really what we're talking about with the three percent CPI is the difference in the reserves at the end of the year.
Whether you use it or not, yes. If you accept this budget.
If you use it, sixteen percent if we don't.
Yes, if you accept this budget.
Yep. Okay.
See, that wasn't stupid, that was a pretty intelligent question. Did I suck up enough?
Yeah, it helped.
I have just kind of another little detailed question. On page four of your initial agency, the personnel increases that are listed, some are underlined and some are not, and I'm curious if there's a significance to that.
Some are what?
Underlined in, in the personnel, I, column N.
No, that's just the way I copied the, the formula across. If you notice, the first one is, is underlined, and so the rest of them were. There's no significance to the underline.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
But there is a significance to the red ink, right?
The red ink means it's less.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Who would like to speak among the department heads to this issue of CPI? State your name, please.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I hope I'm not the, the only one up here, but somebody has to go first. Julie sort of got stuck with, with representing the department heads after a department head meeting we had. All I have to say is what, what she, what she stated to you about the result of that meeting, I agree wholeheartedly in it. I understand that if the Commission decides that they want to decrease the budget, that you have to identify some service that you don't want to provide. But at least with my department, and I think the rest of them are in the same position, we're at a point where to provide the same service we have, we simply can't cut budgets much further. We do have employees that we would like to retain. My office in particular has a lot of very experienced employees, and I very much want to retain them, and the merit raises is a good way to do that. Thank you.
I have a question, Shannon.
Sure.
If you looked long and hard at your office and said, this is the least priority, the lowest priority, this is something we can cut out and it won't affect the public, could you come up with something?
I did that last year. I could, I could always come-
I didn't ask you what you did last year.
There's, there's only so much farther you can do that. I can always come up with something, but I am at the point now where if I cut something, it's going to reflect down the road. I can, I can look at my office and I can say, we cannot purchase some sort of supply, but a year or two from now, we would be at the point where we'd have to double up on that because we don't have it. I could skip some sort of training cost, and I will see that effect a couple down, years down the road with the staff that I have. So yes, I can identify something that the public won't notice if I cut it, but the performance in my office will down the road.
Since you were first, I thought you should stand the test. Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question. I think when we talk about cuts in the budget and, and cutting services that, that would have the least impact upon the taxpayer, I don't think we're talking about cutting supplies or not purchasing a car that you're going to have to purchase the following year, because that's really just kicking the can. Cutting services, in my view, is getting, stop doing a service which would have a long-range impact on your budget, a reduction in your budget, versus just not buying some supplies, not replacing a vehicle, some of those kinds of things, which are really short-range impacts on your budget, because you always got to pick those back up. So with that new definition of what a cut is, I would ask that, I would re-ask the Chairman's question.
My office is in a different position than some of the other offices where I perform only one primary service. So we, we could cut a service, but it would be assessing property. Now, we do have some, some tangent services. We have a website where all of your property assessment information is available on the, on the Internet. That thing is a wonderful thing, we have the best website in South Dakota. We could cut that, and it might save us ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year. But I, I think for that much money, we get a far greater benefit to the public. I don't provide much service other than simply assessing property. So the answer to the question is, there's no.
So, but if you, if you cut a, one of your assessors out, that's going to, that's going to impact your office by not being able to re, you know, re-equalize the property on the timeframes that you've got?
That, that's another kicking the can thing.
Is it?
And in fact, my office will, will be in in the next year to request another position. Industry standards say that we are below staffing levels that are typical for a county of this size, and we need to increase staff. We are maintaining very good assessment numbers with the staff we have, but we are a fast-growing county, and that's not going to continue that way. So cutting is going the opposite direction of what we need to do.
And when was the last time that you added a, a staff person in your office?
It's before me that we added a position, and I don't know when. It would be quite a few years. Now, we did something in the office where we dropped a support position and added an appraiser, because our office needs another appraiser position. So given the change in the environment, that, that website being one factor, we were able to drop a staff position and, and I needed to pick up an appraiser.
Sure.
When we added another person, I don't know, minimum of five years if not longer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make it clear, especially I suppose to people watching on TV, that when we're talking about cutting, it's been a long time since we've cut anybody or any money from a budget. What we're talking about is not giving you as much as you want. I mean, there's a difference between that and cutting services, to me.
I understand the difference between cutting an increase and cutting a budget.
But in response to Commissioner Basgrud, if we want to make a significant reduction in the budget, then you have to start cutting some services. And that's a real cuts. Because if all we're going to do is say, "We want you to tighten your belt more," which is what Pennington County has done for a number of years, the way these guys tighten their belts is they don't purchase some of the equipment that they need to be replaced. And that's just kicking the can down the road. So I think if we're going to not, and you pointed out, the reserves would go to 16% if we didn't take the CPI. But that's a decision this board has to make. But if this board is not going to take the CPI and is not going to lower the estimated reserves down from the 20%, then I think we need to talk about real cuts in services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else who wishes to? Thank you.
They're all very talkative in the meeting, but they're kind of shy today, so.
I couldn't hardly get to the meeting call to order.
Kevin Dome, Pennington County Sheriff. Shannon, I appreciate you going first and taking the initial fire of the questions, and I'll be really brief. We did meet as department directors and talked about different options and how to try and meet the budget goals the commission had set. And I guess my request is hear what the departments have to say through the two days of budget hearings you've had set up, and then make a decision as to how you want to try and solve that. Because I think everybody has different needs for their department. They provide different services for each of the departments. And that may have an impact on whether you take more out of reserves or do or don't take the CPI or tell us to cut services based on what we have to say. But it seems to me it'd be beneficial to hear what everybody has to say before you make those decisions. And obviously, a big piece of this, when you look at the numbers, is the COLA, the merit and the healthcare. And Julie said it correctly, when you look at operational increases, they're very minimal across the board with all the departments. So those three things consume probably, I don't know, 95% of the increases we're talking about. Anyway.
Questions are coming.
Before you get away.
Next.
You know, and that's fine to go through all the budget hearings. But if the department heads want the county commissioners to make the cuts in their budget, the commission doesn't understand your individual department's operation as well as you do. And so again, I would say, I mean, we can go through all those budget hearings if we want, and we can try to take a knife to certain budgets. But the first thing the board needs to decide is, do they want to go through and take the knife? Or are they going to reduce the reserves? Or are we going to take the CPI?
And what we've done and talked about in the past, probably never been done, is, or do we say, "I want to keep the reserves at 19%, and I don't want to take the CPI, so we've got to trim $1,000,000 out of this budget." And department heads, you go back to your meeting and figure it out.
You know, and that's my, I guess that's my preference is, because I think the department heads have a better idea of where to get that $1,000,000, if that's what it amounts to, than what we would have. But the guidelines I think we need to give them, if that's the case, is don't just reduce your operations cost, but come in with specific programs, identify the cost with those programs that you're going to cut and the services are no longer going to be provided, or the services that are going to be slowed down. You know, maybe the treasurer will cut out a staff person and will let the lines build up more in her office. Those kinds of examples, and I think this board needs to give the department heads that kind of direction if we're going to ask them to cut a million bucks.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that 100%. Because we can sit here for the two days we've got scheduled, and it's very difficult, always has been, I've thought, for us to tell the sheriff, "You don't need this and you don't need that." Very difficult to do. We don't.
Mr. Chair. I guess I'd have to agree with that wholeheartedly as it comes down the line, because to task the county commissioners with the cuts, I don't think we really have the idea about how to run every department head in Pennington County. I'm more than willing to make those cuts if the department head can't, if that's what we decide to do. But I really believe that the department head should do it, and that's, I think, what we did last year. Left it up to the department heads. Mr. Troutman, do you have any comments?
You know, how do I say this? I've always kind of, as I've sat through these budget hearings, really felt like the purpose should be, at least once a year, us getting to understand what they're doing in their departments. Are, you know, what is the workload and how are we handling it in that department? And is there a special project that they're wanting to finance? And to me, the budget hearings really are more of a communication between the commission and that department to make us better informed as a board of commissioners. I have agreed with Don for quite some time. That I, and it's good to hear this from the rest of you to this morning, that we do have very, very good department heads. And I have never thought they just spend money to spend money. I never have seen that in six years. They're very careful about what they do with the taxpayer money. And for me, I am very comfortable in leaving it to them to determine what they're going to do with their budget within the guidelines that we give them. And that should be what our job is. We give the guidelines, then we see what they're doing with it. And that becomes a communication of how, what is happening in their departments. It's not necessarily that we're saying, "Oh, well, don't start that new program. Don't do this, don't do that." We should not be doing that as a commission, but we should be informed of what's going on. And so for me, I would very much be in favor of giving them the guidelines. We should go ahead with the hearings, but I think the purpose of those hearings is really for us to just understand what's happening in their departments. I mean, what Shannon said a little while ago. You know, he's looking for another assessor because of the way the county is growing. I mean, we need to know those things. We need to be prepared for them in planning. But in the end, he's going to be the one who puts it in the budget and figures out how he can pay for it. So I think these guys know what they're doing, and they're capable of doing it.
Mr. Chairman, one more comment, and if there's any other questions, I'll let somebody else speak. But we did build this budget based on previous directions from the commission with the health insurance changes, the COLA, the merit. And frankly, it wasn't going to fit in with just the new growth. The CPI had to be factored into that discussion. Because if you keep those three things the commission previously said, "We'd like to see these," then you do have to go cut the operations side of what we do. So we built it with those directions. If you want to change the directions, then that would be useful as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a question before Karen gets started. I want to hear from you, Karen, but I just got a question for Julie. It's been mentioned reducing the reserves to 16%. What's that do to us in our lean parts of the year when we're not receiving our, before we receive our taxes, if we're down to as far as 16%?
From the 20% that we try to hit to the 16 is 4%. That means in September, you've got about an estimated 1%.
About 1%? Okay, thank you. And just for the board's, a comment to the board. I was here, I was here in the early 80s when the county commission spent the reserves down so much that the auditor and the treasurer had to send notices out to department heads that said, "Don't buy anything else in your office because we're out of money and we may not be able to make payroll." So I think having our reserves at a realistic figure is something we need to keep in mind. And it'd make me nervous if we were down to just 1% because if something major happened, we could get ourselves in that kind of bind again. So it might be somewhere between 16 and 20.
If you run out of money, then you issue warrants?
That's correct, and that would take an extra person in our office. Called kicking the can.
My mother got paid with warrants for years when she taught down at Quinn.
Oh, yes.
And they drew interest, as I recall. So that is another avenue. Do you want to issue warrants?
The only thing I could see that that would help, Julie said she'd have to have another employee. Really what we'd have to do is bring in the salary personnel, which is department heads, and all work for Julie trying to put the warrants together.
What I'm trying to do is organize in my mind a ballot that we as commissioners could render, like do you or don't you take the CPI? Do you or don't you keep the reserves at a certain level? But maybe Ollie will have to develop that for us. Can you do that, Ollie? I mean, what are our choices? And then we go, we vote, and then we drop off one and figure out a way to arrive at a decision. I think Karen was ready to speak to us, were you not?
Thank you. Karen Romi, Pennington County Health and Human Services. And I want to thank Commissioner Troutman for what she said, because I think that's exactly, goes in line with the conversation that we had during our meeting. And, you know, we were a little bit hesitant to come here because it almost seems like we're drawing a line in the sand. And it wasn't that way at all. It really is coming to you and saying and advocating for those people that we're serving and those people that we have their safety in mind and also rewarding those people that do give the service. And I think once you go through the budget hearings, you're going to see where we're at and just with the growth of the county, what our needs are. And I can't remember the last time we've ever had an increase in operation or that we've really come in with a mass increasing FTEs. I mean, we've held the budget for years and years. The bottom line is this community is growing and the needs are being greater. So we're really advocating for the people. We're advocating for the taxpayers. We're advocating that we'd like to keep the same services that we currently have. We'd like to keep the same level of safety that we have. We'd like to keep that. And I guess I believe that, I wholeheartedly believe that, I even listened to the national conversations. And all this talked about is cutting taxes and cutting this. And I think the people are just tired of hearing that. They don't want to hear that anymore. They want to say, "What are you doing with the money?" "We want efficiencies. We want effective government." It's not about just cutting taxes or cutting budgets. It's about doing efficiently and effectively. And I think that if we go through the budget hearings, I really like your concept. And I'm glad I have 45 minutes today because you're going to see that. You're going to see exactly what's-
You may not get 45, depending on the vote here.
I have to have. I have to have. I have to. So, but you are going to see exactly what's going on and why, why we're in the situation we are. I have to believe too that in South Dakota and Pennington County, people are not going to quiver over their taxes going up $10, $20 if that means that our community is going to be safe, our neighbors are going to be safe, that we're going to be able to take care of the needs of the people, and we're going to do what government is supposed to do, what county government is supposed to achieve. You might have a few people calling up. That's a few people. I think in general, people think that Pennington County government is a very good government. It's a very efficient government, and we do a very good job and we take care of our people and your constituents.
I wished you would give me a list of your friends that don't care if their taxes go up, because mine sure do.
Mine don't, and I don't. I don't care if mine go up $20 and that means that, you know, we're safe and we have another officer on the street. I appreciate that, because as we can tell what's happening in our community, things are getting more violent, things are getting more severe, issues are getting more serious, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I need to say something about that. And when you say that you don't care if your taxes go up, I can understand that because all of your salary comes from the taxpayers. So you're more than glad to spend a little bit of that money to keep your salary rolling in. But the people out there that have gone to work every day for a living in the private industry and sign checks every day are having that problem of paying their bills. And when you say that the people are tired of hearing, make cuts and quit spending, that doesn't happen in Pennington County. And right now, it doesn't need to happen as long as we maintain what we're doing. But the federal government is the one that the people are mad at and saying, "Look, you're spending way too much money for stupidity." And it needs to stop.
And I too am struggling. I have to just let you know that too. I do struggle with my bills, but I also really believe in this community. I wholeheartedly have put my heart and my soul in this community, and it's far more greater than my paycheck. And I do believe that people want efficiency and effectiveness within whichever government that they're working with, whether it's county, state, or federal government. And I think with the dialogue that we have today, the next two days with, or the next two hearings, that you're going to hear that within our offices, what is being done to create that.
Anyone else?
We're in trouble. Janet's leaning forward.
Thank you, Karen.
Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. This is probably going to get me in trouble, but I don't think that was a fair statement to make to Karen. I think all the department heads, no matter what their salary is in this county, work very, very hard and put in a lot of hours that the people in this county do not realize that we put in. With that being said, as department heads, we need to be very effective and be very frugal. I think all the department heads here do that. I think we would be totally irresponsible not to look seriously at taking the CPI this year. I, for one, in my department, I'm not speaking for any other department in Pennington County, cannot afford to cut another staff member. I've had the same staff since back in the 90s, have not increased anyone. My staff, like the rest of the county employees, work very, very hard. The difference may be that my people are coming at me all the time. Where the auditor is just busy at a certain time of the year, it doesn't mean her staff doesn't work hard also. To take merit raises away from these people again, I think would be a slap in the face. And I really urge you to look at taking the CPI so that we can keep our reserves at 20%. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Anyone else?
Yes. I want to, I think Karen Romi said this when she first came up, and that was that we weren't, we didn't want to have a standoff. We as department heads, when we visited, we really do recognize what the commission's going through as far as the budget. In other words, Commissioner Holloway stated that he doesn't want to see us go to 1% reserves because that's scary. It scares us too. We're all, all of us in this room are county employees. We're also taxpayers. We need to work together to figure this out. I think one thing that came up in the department head meeting that hasn't really been addressed yet is we were uncertain of a clear unified consensus from this commission as to what you're looking for. I think if we had that, if you could tell us, "This is the dollars that we need. This is the cuts that we'd like to see you department heads make. And if that's done, then this happens." In other words, if you can do that, we- In other words, if you can do that, we can get to a point where we give you merits. If, if we just knew what we were looking at, we could try and see what we can come up with to make some cuts. Everybody's budget, there was a consensus in the room, is extremely tight because we've been through this before. We haven't increased our budgets and we've been trying to cut. I understand quite well what Commissioner Holloway is talking about, about cutting services, but sometimes when you cut services, it affects more than just your department, affects several other departments as well. So, you know, we, we, we will, we'll go back to the table. I don't think anybody wants the commission to make the cuts for us because as, as eloquently stated, we, we know what our budgets are and where we could cut if we have to or, or can't, even better. So we don't want the, the commission to just slash. What we do encourage is, is what Janet Sailor just suggested and then giving us a clear idea of where this commission is on a unified front and then we can, we can move from there. But I recognize the challenges, we all do, that the commission is going through and none of us want to, want to get our reserves so low that we, that we're in danger of not being able to make payroll. So my, my point is let's work together to see if we can figure this out.
Any comments or questions from the commission? Who's next? When we talk about spending and federal, federal spending, I look at some of the programs that, that seem to be supported by the borrowed money that the federal government spends. And I have a magazine that deals with some of the issues that go on with endangered species and that sort of thing. And the most recent copy of that magazine indicated that for every wolf they turned loose in Nevada, in one of their programs, the wolves represented $635,000 each that's being spent by the federal government. I don't see that in county government whatsoever. So there is a difference. We, you're all doing an eloquent job. Certainly would listen to someone else if they chose to. Nick?
Nick Stroud, Human Resource Director. I don't want to repeat because Kevin and a few of the other people had said, but I feel as a member of the Pennington County Healthcare Trust Board and as a, I guess, kind of a representative of the employees, I just wanted to give you kind of an update on where we were at as it, as it pertains to the budget. We've been in front of you lately as a healthcare trust board, letting you know that we're doing our best to keep that solvent, but we're at the point where increases are going to have to be made and that's going to be felt by our employees. We just don't have any other choices. That might be in terms of premium increases, deductible increases, things that are going to affect their pocketbook. And that is why we're in that room. We were also talking about doing our best to keep merits and COLA because in addition to everything else that's going up, we know that the people that are on the healthcare, Pennington County Healthcare Plan, that is going to have to go up. And with taking 2012 off of merits, we feel that our employees expect and deserve, the high performing employees deserve a merit in this coming year. And that's something that can be used as a motivational tool. It's something that can be used to reward your high employees. It can be used as something to motivate your lower performing employees to work harder, be more efficient in hopes that they get a merit. And so that would be my statement. I know coming out of the healthcare trust board meeting, we're, we have our backs against the wall and coming out of that department head meeting, we really want to do everything we can to keep the merits and the COLA in the coming budgets.
Any comments or questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I, I, we went through this once before and I think before it's all said and done, we're going to go through it again, that yes, there are COLAs and yes, there are merits, but there's also whatever the, whatever the county is going to pick up on health insurance costs for the employees.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that also adds to what they're getting because most people out there are seeing increases in their health insurance premiums and no one's covering it but them. So I think we've got to keep that in mind and someday when it's your turn, we're going to be, I'm going to be asking for those figures again.
Okay.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else?
I suppose I could put a little positive on this. Heine Juggu, Penning County Highway Superintendent. My department was very fortunate. The legislature increased license plate fees a year ago and they're also going to take another $10 increase in 2013. So as far as my budget, I didn't ask for any additional general fund property tax dollars, any increase in personnel and projects is all being funded with the license plate fees. So I'm not asking for the CPI as far as to, to fund my department. The only thing I did put in there, I did put in the support to CPI increase for unorganized road, which if you remember, a lot of the people from the public have came in front of the board and, and requested the county to maintain different portions of roads in the county. So I looked at, at the CPI increase as a, a tool that the commissioners could use if they so elected, they could put that CPI and, and the 2% growth that you didn't apply in prior years, that you could actually add a few miles of road to the highway system and, and serve some more people. If you did want to cut the general fund support, and I guess the first item I would look at as far as reducing services would be emergency respond and snow removal. Cut back, cut my overtime out and not, not go out on Saturdays and Sundays and, and, but you would have a big uproar from the public. That's the easiest one to cut. I got, I still got to fix the potholes, still have to gravel the roads. And that would be one area that, that I could look at trying to trim some dollars. But we have, the stores are open on weekends and the people at work during the week, they have to go to the stores. So they all just about need to use the roads 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that'd be a difficult decision to do, so. Otherwise with that, if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Hello. I do have a question, Heine. How much general fund tax dollars do you receive in your budget to support your operations?
$1,950,000.
And $1,950,000?
Correct.
And when, when they, when the legislature increased the license plate fees and frankly, they've doubled them, I think. Janet got more of my money this year buying license plates than she had the year before. And you tell me that I'm going to have to do that again next year.
In 2013, yes.
In 2013. And I don't think the legislature has wrestled over raising those license plate fees nearly as much as we wrestle over our budgets. But having said that, it was my understanding that one of the, one of the things that the legislature is watching is that we don't go in and cut the, the support that we had been giving to county highway departments just because we got the increase in license plate fees, because there was some politicking that went on that said, "We need more money to fix the county roads." Is that a true statement or is it?
That's, that's a true statement and, and I know they're watching that and, and they're going to get a report probably the next session, the 2013 session, to look at those numbers to see if there's a bunch of counties that have reduced their property tax support and really not given increase. And they're going to look at that before they will allow the 2013 increase to come in effect. It wasn't a double. It was about a $10, $11 increase on your cars, but on your recreational vehicles, it was a little bit higher than that. So it wasn't a full doubling.
Just seemed like a lot more money. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Heine.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sure I could stir up the whole mess right now if you want me to try and do it and give them, give them some kind of an idea and we can work from there. And I'm just going to, I'm just going to say, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the 3% CPI for next year, add the 2012, 2.5% holdover and the growth and give it to the department heads to work out in that budget.
Wasn't it 2.1?
Yep.
That's what I said, yep.
I thought you said 2.5.
No, 2.1. I hope I said that, that's what I said anyway.
There's a second to that motion.
Well, second for the purpose of discussion. I have a question, Julie. How long did you say we could hold that CPI over three years?
Three years.
So if we take last year's of 2.1 and, and we, that, we have three years to work with the 3% for this year?
Correct.
So you can kind of keep?
Keep moving.
Moving ahead if you wanted to do that?
That would be advisable if you're.
Yeah. Just not take this year's, but take last year's.
Take last year's.
Just, I may have missed something here, but why, why is last year's 2.1 instead of 3?
The maximum set by the state is 3%, but the state tells us what CPI we are allowed and it's based off of some consumer price index factor out of Denver.
Last year it was not 3%.
2.1. It was not. It's max, actually it was 3.5% this year and since it's capped at 3, that's all we could go forward.
Mr. Chairman, so I, just roughly speaking, if we did that, our, our reserves would go to about 18.5%?
If we made no cuts.
So the, I, I'm not sure I understood the motion. The motion is to do what now?
Motion is to remove this, to reduce the 3.5 or 3% CPI for this next budget year and add the growth and add the 2.5% holdover.
2.1.
Or 2, 2.1.
I don't think it's reduce, I think it is to not take.
Not take, not take the 3.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, not take the this year's CPI, but take the last year's.
Because we've already made a motion once to use the growth. This board has made that motion and passed that. So really the question is, are we going to take the 2.1? Are we going to take the 3% or a combination thereof?
I guess what I was trying to do is put it all into one lump sum so it'd all be in the minutes together and they wouldn't have to storm around looking for it.
We're considerably ahead of schedule. We've got, according to the budget hearing schedule, from 10:00 to 10:30 is Auditor Julie Pearson. And so Julie has another 25 minutes to fill. However, given the, given the motion and the fact that at this point in time, rather than hurry into, the motion is not fully understood and clearly addressed, we'll either take a break or let Ollie explain something to us.
I was just thinking in my mind, Julie's is for her individual budget hearing, so we don't need everybody else to stay here and visit. So if the board wants to finalize their vote, we can proceed with budget hearings, go in and with what cuts are actually made, we might very well hit that 2.1. So we can finalize that vote and adjourn and start individual hearings.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Julie. The difference between the 953,000 that would balance this at 20% or 19 point, whatever it was, percent reserves and the 677,000 as being proposed that we use for the 2013 budget is $276,000 in round figures. What, what does that amount to on the reserves? What, how, how much would that reduce our reserves down to, if we didn't come across any other cuts as we're going through these budgets?
18.5.
It's 18.5?
Roughly.
Roughly 18.5, thank you. I don't have a calculator.
It's, it's right at that, I think.
Yeah.
Because that's about 2/3.
2/3 of it, yeah. And it's September that we can really come down and, and be low in the amount of cash that we have, right?
Yep.
So is it so out of line, I guess, to, to suggest that maybe department heads kind of keep track of that and so we make sure that September's still good if we go to an 18.5%? You know, just kind of be careful of what supplies they're ordering at that time and... Good. I would suggest going through your budget hearings and, and seeing what, what cuts in services, if, if you ask that question in each, each budget hearing, go through all of that and then we put together new projections.
So you're suggesting we don't vote on this motion that's on the floor to use the 2.1% for this year?
No, to go, to, to approve that motion if that's the board's desire, to get that down in concrete, go through with the budget hearings, make any reduction in services that the budgets, you know, can, or that the board sees fit if, if you ask department heads as, and then recalculate what that would be and bring that back to the board when you're done with budget hearings.
So cuts that we would make in the budget would, would increase the?
Reserve, yep.
That's where you'd be at.
Yep.
Wouldn't we be better off to let the department heads have another department head meeting like they did the last one and work with this, with that amount of money and see what they can come up with?
We'll probably do that after you have your budget hearings to get down to that. That would, to me would...
I see a few heads have to go this way and something like, so I'm not sure which, but...
I think, just my thought is if, if we're, if we're to 275,000 or 276,000, that will, maybe we'll find some money in there, but if we don't find any money and the board agrees to the 18% reserves, we, we're still in the ballpark.
Yes. We can come back once you make any cuts or suggested cuts in services or just cuts to the budget, once you start going through them. And then we can recalculate that, come back to the board and the board can either decide to accept it or send it back to the department heads to make cuts. So Ken, I have a question for you. You kind of kept saying 2.5%.
I mean, I got 2.1 right, right here, but I can't, I can't say what my writing is.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't thinking really 2.5% because that, that would be great.
2.1 holdover.
Okay. Are you comfortable with the details of the motion?
My understanding is that we will be voting to take last year's CPI at 2.1% and... Storing the 3%. Storing the 3%.
And, and I'd like that business of the growth staying in this motion so that way it's all in one place.
Okay, I, I don't know how Robert's Rules of Order is if we've already voted on it.
It's okay. It's just noting it in the minutes.
Okay. That's fine. All right.
Roll call vote.
Davis?
Yes.
Busford?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
I'm tempted to vote no, but I'll vote yes.
We're all tempted.
Now we've, we've encroached 10 minutes into your, a lot of time now that I understand the agenda.
You need to adjourn as...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You adjourn as a county commissioner and then we go into public or into budget hearings. That way Karen doesn't have to take minutes.
I'd like to take a five minute break and let them talk.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have to, we have the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? A second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.